Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call our special budget meeting work session to order. Welcome those who are joining us in person here this fifteenth day of May 2025. And we do have council members Benevente and McNair online. Welcome you all. Can you hear us? Councilmember McNair, can you hear us? Councilmember Benevente, can you hear us? Okay. All right. So as they work through the audio, we do have enough to start the meeting. Counsel, I will have to ask to be excused. I need to give remarks at an opening ceremony here at 10:30. So about 10:15, I'll ask for a motion to excuse. I will be right back immediately following. So as we move into that, I'll go to you, Mr. Yates.
Thank you, Mayor. I will start off. Want to again say thank you to the council for your guidance and helping us develop the budget, which we presented to you earlier this week. I now also have an opportunity over my shoulder to ask Kimberly Leonard, our Budget and Valuation Director, she would stand briefly introduce her team to help put it together as well.
We have four analysts here today. One's not here today. Jerome Coaxen, Tiffany Woodhook, Amina Mitchell, and Priscilla Zappad.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And would also add as well that in looking at how we communicate or can communicate the recommended budget and as we move forward with council, as I'm sure many citizens are asking you questions as well, and we'll get into that in just a moment, and being conscious of the mayor and other members' time. When we went back and we looked at the budget, what we have presented to you is a budget that totals $312 million. By reference, your budget last year was $320 or $321 million. So this budget is numerically smaller than last year's budget, but it also continues to advance your priorities. As we talked about, and I think as Mr. Yates will also delve into, this is also given the fact that we've had a change in many of our revenue sources, some of them to our detriment, while at the same time continuing historic investments that the council made last year in public safety, as well as advancing our community with the various geo-bonds, which are now in the recommended budget, fully funded for repayment. The other thing that I would say is that in looking at the recommended tax rate, which is 44.95 cents, this is probably most telling to me, is that that is the lowest numeric tax rate that the city of Fayetteville has had in more than 30 years. You have never had a tax rate numerically lower than 44.95 cents in the last 30 years. And it could very well be more than 30 years. It just so happens that we ran out of time looking in old budget books at the tax rates, and that was what we could find in passing. And I think some councilmembers had asked about that before. And so just those two numbers alone don't mean that there isn't more work to be done on the budget as council moves to translate what was recommended into your budget to advance your priorities. Jeff will talk about in just a moment some items which we know are in the parking lot, which we need council to help us prioritize to squeeze into the existing budget. And we look forward to all of that work. But empirically, your budget is more than 10, almost $10 million less than it was, eight million, some change, less than it was last, this current fiscal year. And again, your numeric tax rate is the lowest it has been in 30 years. And those are two things which I think are important if you're just trying to relate to the public, the magnitude and scale of the work that the staff has done in preparing this year's budget.
All right. We'll do that, and then we'll get, we'll kick in, and then we'll take breaks to catch up on questions. Go ahead, Councilmember here.
During our initial presentation, I and I'm pretty sure many other members gave some thoughts or some additions that they may have wanted added and this and that. And normally, I'm not saying you haven't done it, but normally you all dictate that, you know, that to paper for us. So we remember what it is. I was trying to remember mine as I was writing, and I stopped because normally you would write those down and let us know, okay, councilmember, whatever, whatever said this. And that stuff that was just added to our book, is that a part of it? Or is it, you all have it and going to pass it out?
What was added to the book was an upgrade to the cover and also the transmittal. So no, that is not there. We are tracking.
Yeah, I was just hoping that I, it was a list. I mean, I'm pretty sure you got them in the parking lot.
Right. The parking lot list that you'll see today is the recommendations from staff and based on the Monday meeting before last on the public safety items that were discussed in open session. The items that were discussed when we did some of our small group briefings have not been added yet. But we have kept a list of those. And we can talk a little bit about process when we get to the parking lot, about how you as a council would like those to enter the list.
Okay. That's what I was speaking of. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Good morning.
Morning.
So thank you, first of all, for being here, and thank you for looking at the document. I know you received it Monday night. So today, what our goal is, we're going to talk about a lot of stuff today. Hopefully, this will touch the main, or at least the high points of a lot of the conversation. For our next meeting on the 22nd, we really want to focus in on public safety and talk about OCS, talk about the police department. I know there's been interest from multiple councilmembers about pay issues and compression and the structure and pay structure with the police and fire, talking about the unfunded request for fire. There were not any in the police department. And talking about then also the additional security enhancements that you talked about at your Monday before last meeting to include the brief cams, the security enhancements at Festival Park and that kind of stuff. So what we've tried to really do is isolate for next, for your 22nd meeting, that discussion. And then on the, then the 29th meeting, after your public hearing, we'll come back and answer any additional questions. I know we have an outstanding question on the parking fund. We're still working on getting together. So really, that's kind of the structure of what we laid out. After the public hearing, we're really look to you to answer, answer those questions or delve deeper into items that you want us to delve deeper into. You have both documents complete now. The ads that were made, as Kimberly mentioned, to your document were the transmittal summary message and a change out of some typos on the, on the cover page and so forth. So the presentation you have today, I want to talk a little bit about the budgetary landscape and the historical tax rate. If you remember during the, during your retreat, we talked a lot about kind of what the financial landscape looked or the service landscape looked like. So what I have now are some numbers to add to that conversation that we didn't have in January. So I want to share that with you. I want to go over briefly the Parks and Rec Geo Bond pro forma. So what's driving those rates? If you follow down the list of things we're going to talk about today, it really is around identifying and talking through the components of the tax rate. So it's Parks and Rec Geo Bond pro forma, the Public Safety and Housing Bond. Bottom line up front, as Dr. Hewitt mentioned, we have been able to restore the housing bonds back into the plan within, within a lower rate or within the revenue neutral rate, the Public Safety GOs. So that's, that's good news. If you remember back a couple of years ago when we set that into place, we were unable to do that. The Infrastructure Geo Bond pro forma, where that licensing fee is going, the registration licensing fee, that $20. Talk about the dedicated capital rate and kind of how that four cents branches out across the various capital funds. Talk a little bit about general fund costs and the new investments. And then talk about the stormwater utility, what it looks like for rate increases in the near future. And if you remember, there's no rate increase recommended this year and on solid waste, same issue. There's no rate increase recommended this year, but we do have some future projections to look at. And then we'll look at review and talk about the parking lot. Are there any questions on the agenda before we get started?
No. Before you get into that, council, I ask for a motion to be excused. I will come back shortly. All right. Motion by Councilman Alejandro II and by Councilwoman Green. Any discussion? All right. Show of hands, just to be excused for this brief moment. Mr. Head, you not voting for me to be excused?
Mayor, I'll vote for you next year.
How about Benevente and McNair? Do they got audio yet?
Green.
Okay. All right. All right, council. Thank you. I'll see you in a bit.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So let's talk a little bit about the tax rate and the history. As, as mentioned earlier, we dug back 30 years. And what we found is that this is the lowest recommended tax rate in that 30-year window. The slide you have in front of you right now just kind of depicts that. And the years with the blocks around them were the revow years, the historical revow, and then, of course, the 26 recommended. Your 26 recommended rate is at 44.95, and that's the breakdown. So we'll get into that a little bit more. But as you can see, this is that lowest rate, and this helps illustrate that. One thing we, we will put together for you, as I know it's always a topic of interest, and we're working through putting that together right now, is that rate comparison against similar communities. Keeping in mind that we would anticipate that we would start to fall down in that list and be lower because not everybody did a revow this last year. Everybody's on their own revow cycle. So comparatively and competitively, your rate will be lower against those other cities. So let's talk about the budgetary landscape. You've seen this slide. Remember, we have the main arrow that goes across. That's money. When we looked at revenue and what our available revenues for 2026 would be, it's about 186.6 million at the revenue neutral rate. Okay? Keep in mind, revenue neutral is 3876. Okay? So that's about 186.6 million. When we looked at what it would take to provide the same level of services, not new services, but the same level of service that you had in 2025, that cost is about $203.6 million. That includes inflation. That includes employees, keeping the employees in place. That includes the necessary pay for employees, the set pay and so forth. So and that's, that's just the core service. Whoop, I went the wrong way. There we go. So when we looked at it then and said, okay, directors, what do you see as the driving or as the changing service demand? This is the general fund, so this isn't across all funds, but this is the general fund. When you look out into the community and you see the changing community dynamic and the changing service demands of the community, what would you recommend that we add as far as services? When we put all that together with current services plus that increase in demand, we're looking closer to $214 million. So there, as we talked about earlier, or as we talked about in January, in February, that demand is going to outpace the ability to pay. We know that. That demand frontier, if you will, that red arrow, even if we ask the residents, that arrow would continue to stretch out even further to the right. Okay? We looked at possible revenue. If you left your rate unchanged from last year at the 57.95, you would generate about $224.7 million, about 224 or 25 million. Okay? Obviously, that's more than what we've identified. But again, if you were to pick up everything everybody had asked for, you would go, if you asked the residents, that continuation of that demand would be out beyond that. So then the recommended budget. The recommended budget that we're kind of talking about with the general fund and the recommended rates is about 205 million. That's somewhere in between current services and some new initiatives, our new investments that we see and the directors have asked for to support the changing demand in the community. Okay? That, part of the way we did that is we didn't fund all of the current services. We are preparing that list for you to give you that, plus what the directors asked for that's not included, and a little bit of our description of the S, what we refer to as SL3, are the service enhancements. But we did, the 203.6 million was not fully funded, nor was the service demand increase. So there are still things on the list that departments had asked for that we weren't able to fund at that current tax rate or at that recommended tax rate. Okay? So I just wanted to bring this back to you and fill in some of the numbers around that because I think it's really significant from the perspective of what does it cost to operate the city? The biggest chunk of our funding, 114 million, goes to police and fire and OCS. So I just wanted to kind of lay that landscape. We'll come back to the general fund toward the end of the discussion. But I wanted to provide that framework for the tax rate and the historical tax rate. So the Parks and Recreation Geo Bond. If we go back and look, your tax rate's broken into four chunks. The largest chunk's the operating rate. Then you have the Parks and Rec Geo bond rate, which is the rate necessary to support the debt on the referendum voter-approved bonds. You have the Public Safety and Housing Geo bond rate, which is the, again, the debt service for those approved projects that approve the referendum debt. And then you have dedicated capital improvements. We have a, a part of that where we are trying or we are working to fund continuous maintenance operations and looking at how we continue to maintain and replace our facilities, vehicles, apparatus and so forth. And we'll get into a little bit of that. But I just wanted to highlight that because that's kind of how we're going to work through today, looking at them.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Thank you, Mr. Yates. Can you go back to the, the budgetary landscape slide? That one. Thank you, sir. So you have the different numbers there, revenue neutral, rate neutral, the proposed and the service demand numbers. Picking the proposed budget, the 203 million, the total proposed budget was 312 or something in that neighborhood?
Correct. Correct.
And so the balance of that, you're looking at what, 90, 109 million? So that comes from different funds?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. So the solid waste and, and storm water?
Solid waste, storm water, the airport.
Enterprise funds?
All the enterprise funds, transit. They're all, all the different components.
Okay. So percentage-wise, let me do some quick math.
It's about two-thirds, one-third.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Councilmember Head.
Thank you. Mr. Yates, also looking at our landscape, the budgetary landscape, what in FY '26, if it stays the same, you are saying that if the core services stays the same, and then you said that the, in the recommended 205.6 mill will be with increases of, and I wasn't sure what you were meaning with those two. I, I know, I'm aware of like police and fire and trash. And if that was far as you were going with the core, okay? But if not, tell me what it is. And you say if it's increased to the recommended of the 205, I wanted to know what they were. What were those increases you were talking about?
Sure. So and we'll, and I have, we can talk about specifically where those increases are. It's about $3 million of new added, mostly staff to provide that support. So the biggest chunks are $1 million for construction management. If you remember during your May 5th work session, we talked about the construction management piece. So that's about a million of the three. There is.
And that's the new, not the new department.
The new initiatives.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then another big chunk of that, about 600,000, give or take, is related to the development services to provide more inspectors and a career path and to keep up with the growth and the changing state laws around inspectors and the certifications, plumbing inspectors, electrical inspectors and so forth. Then the other pieces include fire inspectors to keep up with the backlog in the inspections and to keep us in tune with the required inspections. We're a little bit behind. So that gets us caught up and then continues to keep up that backlog. That specific piece is covered and offset by rates for inspections because the more inspections they do, the more revenue they generate. There are a couple of other pieces in there for IT, about 300,000 for IT, which is to deal with security and look at our mobile device management program. As the city has grown as far as iPads, computers, all that stuff, we need to, it's a security issue. So we have to have some additional support to help manage those and our, obviously, then an additional security person. And then the other pieces in marcom.
Is in what?
Marketing communications, where we're looking at content creator and some additional PIO because one of the messages we've heard loud and clear from you as a council is we want to be better at telling our story. How do we get that out there? How do we, how do we work with public perception? How do we engage the public? So those are the primary big pieces. We'll get to the slide which outlines in more detail.
Okay. So you're going to have those details in your.
Yes, sir. They're, they are toward the, toward the latter part of the presentation. But that's just the thumbnail sketch of what's, what's driving that from to, up to 205.
And, and nothing, and, and none of this has anything to do with some of the requests during that first pre-meeting?
No, it does not.
From councilmembers?
So this is the, this is only the recommended, which doesn't include any of the council additions or anything that was asked for. And one point of clarification as well, as Councilman Alejandro has pointed out, this doesn't include stormwater. This doesn't include solid waste, doesn't include the airport, doesn't include, except for the part that goes from the general fund to transit. All of those are excluded from this conversation. This is just purely the general fund, of which the majority is that public safety component and your parks and recreation. Those, those pieces all put together are about two-thirds.
Thank you.
Okay. Does that help clarify?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm sorry. So out of that blue line, the 203 million, if the ad valorem tax rate or in this year's tax values, the one penny represents approximately 2,350 grand. At 44.95 cent, we're looking at about 105 million. So what makes up, or can you tell me what page in our budget book? What makes up the other 98 million?
Sure. The, a big chunk of the other, the other half of that is going to be the sales tax.
Which is approximately how much?
About 50 million.
Okay.
So the remainder is functional revenues, investments, other taxes such as the pilot payment from PWC, electrical taxes, cable, all of those.
But I'm sure there's a breakdown in that. Is there a page? E6? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, and we can certainly come back to that and discuss it in more detail if you'd like. Okay. Any other questions?
All right. Continue.
Thank you. So the Parks and Recreation Geo Bond, going back, I believe it was 2017. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, that the voters approved the about $35 million of Geo bonds for Parks and Rec projects. I'm excited to say that we are down really to two main projects left as we wrap the others up. As work started, restarted on Tennis Center and the Mabels, I'm sorry. The two remaining projects, Cape Fear, River Trail, and MacArthur Sports Complex. So we have issued all of that debt. So now we know what our ongoing debt costs are going to be. Given that, we're able then to model out what the cost of that is because there's some assurance to that. You can see, when you look at this, we have our principal payments. We've issued two tranches, 2019, 2022. When we set the revenue, basically to cover the debt service. And you set the revenue at a level where you can build balance early and then over time, burn that balance down. Okay? So you can see across where it says balance, where we're at in 2026 is about $2.6 million. But as you can see by 2031, that balance becomes about 586,000. Okay? So the idea is to essentially, instead of setting the rate higher, you took some event early in the process. You adopted the rates a year or two before you issued the debt to create rate stability, if you will. All right? This is a reoccurring theme you'll see. So the idea of fund balance, one of the big things, particularly when you're looking at debt and capital, fund balance is there as a rate stabilization mechanism. Okay? So you can, instead of having a peak rate and then a declining rate, you set a lower earlier rate and then ride that out until you get to start burning down that balance. All right? So it's kind of like budget billing, if you will. If you're familiar with that concept, you pay one price all year long and then you adjust it each time. Okay? So with that, we're recommending a rate for that Geo bond is about 8.83 cents. If you remember, that rate was 1.42. And so that comes down. But we have a lot more knowns in that process now as we start, like I said, wrapping up all those projects, finishing up the major projects in that. And that bond program should be closed out in, in three or four years, I believe. Is that, so I'll be happy to answer any questions on the Parks and Rec Geo Bond pro forma.
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
So I guess my question is, as I was looking through this and you were talking about how you did the avalorium tax and you brought down the Geo bond rate and you brought down other things. If the Geo bond rate is only for like the next three years, why are we not keeping it to where it was and making the avalorium rate percentage down?
Okay. So let me be sure.
And I might be confused on this because I haven't seen this before.
Let me, let me. Let me, let me, let me see if I can repeat back the question to be sure I'm answering the right question.
Okay.
The question is, we went from 142, 1.42
Correct.
To 0.83.
Correct.
Right? As part of the calculation and knowing that with the revaluation and knowing the cost and that increased value, while we tried to set that rate, was only minimally to what was needed to support the debt. So absolutely, if council said, we want to go back to 1.42, that little more than half a penny or about 1.25 million, give or take, would then be available for something else. So what this rate does, this recommendation does is sets that rate so that your debt is covered through the life of the program.
So I understand all that. I guess where I'm coming from is the Parks and Rec bond money is earmarked for Parks and Rec.
Correct.
So I feel that we have taken the rate, you know, that, you know, we all know that's what everybody is more, more, more. So it's not going to be here forever, the Parks and Rec bond. I would just rather, I'm having a hard time with the rate that is presented to us. I mean, full disclosure, I'm having a tough time with it. And I think that we can get our red pins out and we can make it work. But I don't understand that Parks and Rec is such an important thing. We are talking about expanding our Parks and Rec, we're talking about expanding having children come and hours and things like that. So that's the part that I'm not understanding, that we're kind of moving. We're just, we're moving, we're just robbing Peter to pay Paul. It's not, I shouldn't put it that way, we're just moving money.
You're rebalancing your rates.
We're rebalancing our rates.
Absolutely.
And I just, I like that that was earmarked for that purpose.
So just to clarify, and we'll look at the general, the dedicated capital rate in just a second. There's really two buckets of Parks and Recreation projects. There's the GO bond bucket, right? And this was the projects that were gone through at the time of the election and so forth. So this is that, finishing out that program. There is also Parks and Recreation projects funded through the general capital rate, which is the remainder of all the other types of things that weren't part of the bond program.
Absolutely.
And that's, a couple of slides later, we can, I can show you where we're, where we have funding going to that.
Yeah, I understand that. I just, I'm just not, I've said my piece.
Absolutely.
Okay. Councilmember Hondros?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Sir, if I'm understanding correctly, if we look at that page five of the PowerPoint deck for today, it's over six years, right? Not three?
It's, actually, your debt is going to live until 20, until like 2050. So this fund, if we were to blow this slide out and you had out over here, the idea is that this fund burns down over the next 20 years until all the debt's paid for and all the fund balance is used. So you're seeing it in a five-year chunk here. The projects were done in a five or six-year chunk as well. Does that answer your question? I'm not sure I answered your question.
Maybe. It's just, I'm trying to wrap my head around the understanding of this. So the debt on the Parks and Rec bond is going to live through 2050, potentially. So to Mayor Protam's question, if we change this 0.83 to 1.42 and don't change anything else, does that make the ad valorem, proposed ad valorem rate higher or lower?
It would make it higher.
It would make it higher. That's what I was thinking. Okay. That's, all right. Thank you.
And so another way to look at it is, is that so that we can tell the public how much it costs for them to issue $35 million in GO debt. When we went out and the council and the staff sold this to, not sold it, educated the public on what the $35 million would be used for and how much it would take, I think the rate that we came up was 1.35 originally and then it went to 1.42. Is that about right, Kelly? And so now that the values have increased to support that debt, we only need to budget a tax rate or put so much of our paycheck aside that works out to be, is that 0.83? Is that what you said?
Correct.
0.83. But for the general public, they get taxed on all of it, regardless of whether or not we were to put in 0.83 to 0.35 or 0.42. If you were to, and I think Mayor Protam, this may have been where you were going, if you were to leave that rate higher and dedicate all of the 1.42, which now generates more money that is needed to pay off that debt over a 20-year timeframe, you could pay that debt off sooner, but at the end of paying it off sooner, you have, you just have more debt capacities you could issue. You know, you could, because you could lower the tax rate then. This was the balance between trying to tell folks, originally we told you it was 1.35 cents to support 35 million. Then when, I guess, revow happened, it was going to take 1.42, and now the revow has happened again, we think it's going to take 0.83 to support the life of that debt. And the same is true of the other GO issuances that he's going to talk about. You may recall, two years ago, we did not budget money in our tax rate for the repayment of the $12 million in housing funds. We just, we could not squeeze it in. And that was one of, we said, well, we're not issuing that debt yet. We're not issuing it yet. We're not, we're not using that money yet, so we may not need to tax the citizens for that yet. But all of it still comes out to be the 0.4495 recommended. And I'm not sure if that answered the question that you had or not, but that was how the debt was comprised. It didn't, did it? Okay.
Councilmember Benevente?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. Mr. Yates, is there any benefit to, and I think Doug was kind of speaking to it, but I just wanted a little bit more clarity, to paying this off any sooner than 2050?
So there's a couple of factors to that, but yes, there is from an interest savings perspective. Obviously, if you pay it off, you don't pay the interest. However, your debt, GO typically comes with only a 10-year call provision. So in the first 10 years, you can't pay it off early. You have to wait till that call provision comes into play. So when that call provision becomes available, if you have cash to pay it off, you can achieve the savings that on this table, when you look down at annual interest payments, that would be for that last 10 years of the debt, that's what you would save because you no longer owe it. But beyond that, you have to wait till your call provision kicks in to be allowed, to be able to pay it off early. So, and I believe this debt has a 10-year call provision.
You believe?
Do we, have you got?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Benevente. I apologize. Go ahead.
Do we have an idea if we keep the rate the same? Because I'm sure if we kept it at one point, whatever it was, that it wouldn't get done in 10 years still, because, or what would the 10-year mark be?
So the LGC requires you to have paid off about half your principal by the time you reach the 10-year mark. So you would need, at that point, about 17 million probably to be able to pay that debt off.
What is the 10-year mark in this case?
On your 2022 debt, that 10-year mark will be 2030, 2032 or 2033. I can model that if you would like. We can model that and take a look at what the savings, what savings that would generate from doing that. We have not done that. So.
Well, and I mean, if Mayor Protam is serious about that consideration, the only way I can imagine really considering it is if you guys did map all that out, because otherwise, I'm sure City Manager and yourself and all, and the whole team that put together the proposed tax rate, I just, I'm trying to look into earlier slides because I haven't committed to memory what the current proposed tax rate is, but I know that for you guys to get to that number, you guys had to find it somewhere. And I'm sure this was part of you guys finding it, was bringing down that one and 0.14 down to that 0.83. Like where else would you, well, I guess that's the whole point of today, is to find all the different places that you guys are cutting from, but I mean, certainly it would frustrate that effort that you guys made to bring it down to 0.83 to contribute to the lowering of the overall tax rate. Is that correct?
Correct.
Well, and so maybe my question?
I'm sorry. I misspoke the, I said 2050, it would be 2032, 33 for the first 10 years, and then 2042, 43 would be the payoff. So I misspoke. I added 30 years, not 20. Sorry about that.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. So Madam Mayor Protam, I mean, how aggressive are you really interested in being on this? Because if you are, I mean, we would need a lot more information from Yates to say whether it's actually worth, you know, taking away from something in the short term, because it's going to have to come up, it's going to have to come out of somewhere if we're going to keep the current proposed tax rate or the proposed, yeah, what's the proposed tax rate again? I'm going to try and memorize it after you tell me.
44.95.
For the hundredth time.
44.95.
44.95, down from 56.?
57.95.
57.95, right. So yeah, I mean, if we're going to try and bump this 0.83 back to 1.14, unless we cut 1.14 from somewhere else, you know, we're no longer at 4495, correct?
That'd be correct.
So to answer your question, Councilmember Benevente, I, I need to do, I'd like to have some conversation with Mr. Yates about the Parks and Rec bond because I, the 44 point, was it 44.?
95.
95. I think that that can come down a few cents myself. So I, we just got our book, so I'm looking through it so we can take our red pen to it. But I just want to make sure that the Parks and Rec, we do have two other things that need to be done, and I just want to make sure that the Parks and Rec GO bond is paying for those and not coming out of our general fund. So that's where all this is lying. So I just need to put some stuff in the parking lot and we need to go through it. So I don't know if that answered your question or not.
Well, I mean, it sounds like you want more information, which is great. I would just say that we should all get the, that information that you get out of Yates from the direction that you're headed.
Absolutely. I will send an email and it will be a reply all to everyone.
And we'll be doing the Budget Chronicles again this year. So any questions we get, we will post them on the internet and provide them to all council.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all for me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I just have two simple questions. These figures are from debt owed, correct?
Yes.
My next question would be, how come we can't separate what the percentage would be from the 19 bond and the 22 bond?
You mean the tax rate?
Yes.
We can.
Okay. Can you put that in the parking lot so I can see that?
Sure. We'll add it to our question list. But keep in mind, this was all one bond election.
Say again?
It was all one bond election. The timing, the 2019 and 22 were just timing of how it was issued.
Oh, this is the same bond? I thought you said one was from 17, the other one was from the 22 general obligation bond.
No, the issuance, they are approved in 2017. The, you didn't actually issue the money until 2019 and 2022 to be, because your projects were, you needed to reimburse yourself at that point. So this is, this is the same singular bond issue for Parks and Recreation.
So let me ask this other question. I'm glad you clarified that for me. So none of this is pertaining to the general obligation bond that we passed in 2022?
Not the public safety and infrastructure. No, sir. Not this one. We'll look at that one in just a second.
Got you. Disregard then, disregard.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Hondros?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Mr. Yates, out of the 203 million, or out of our general fund, there's X amount that is already encumbered or appropriated or whatever the correct term is. How much is that percentage in dollars?
I'm not sure I completely understand the question.
So this council can't throw this book away and start from scratch because some of the money's already been spent, hasn't been spent, but it's appropriated or it's earmarked for certain things. So how much of that in dollars and percentage of the budget?
So
Give me one or the other and I can figure it out.
On the general fund side, there is the commitment to Cape Fear River, the Cape Fear Regional Theater, which is about half a million a year for another couple of years. The remainder of it was kept in place, you had the about several million dollars related to the stadium debt, which is debt that we have to pay. But beyond that, it's all operations. So it's about 150 million, just under 150 million in salaries to keep your current staff in place. The remainder in 50 is across the operating account, supplies, fuel, maintenance of vehicles, all those things. You have about eight, eight million, eight and a half million that's being sent over to transit that is match money and helps with the getting the apportionment and helps your transit system continue to operate. So there's, as far as like, when you say encumbered, the council, it's a trade-off, right? It's always going to be a trade-off when you do, as we looked at in the landscape, you can cut that back. It's going to be a trade-off as to services, staff, and those when you reduce resources. We have about 5 million of fund balance we're recommending, one of the, of usage. One of those big chunks is the 3.3 million that is still owed for the Civil War History Museum that we have to make that payment. And then a couple of other one-time items that are in the CIP that we believe are one-time in nature and can wrap up, so like 900,000 for the remainder of the ERP wrap-up to finish that project out. So when you say encumbered, you have those commitments as a council, but typically there are not appropriation clauses. So if you said, we don't want to do it, you have that legal right, but the question then becomes, do you want to kill off that commitment from a prior council? Does that, does that make any sense how I'm explaining that?
Yes, sir. I appreciate it. And then the last question, we talked about borrowing capacity. So whether we leave this number for this particular bond at 0.83 or whether we move it back to 1.42 or somewhere in the middle or some new number entirely, what in the ballpark, not to the dollar or the penny, but ballpark, what's our borrowing capacity total for the city of Fagel?
I have not looked at your capacity because it's a big number. So the LGC limits you to a portion of total value?
Of our budget or general fund balance?
Total value of your ad valorem, your total ad valorem value. So your total ad valorem value is about 20 billion?
So it's a percentage of that number?
So it's a percentage of that number.
And again, I'm not going to hold you to this, but out of the money we've already borrowed, what percentage of our capacity would you say that is? Is it like 10%, 25%, 50%?
It's probably less than, it's probably less than 10% of your capacity, if I had to guess.
Okay. So the reason I ask, I mean, when we look at potentially moving this number and then in a few minutes, when we look at the other GO bond number, I mean, the capacity's there, it's just a matter of, it's a balance, right? So how much interest are we willing to pay? How, how many years are we willing to carry this debt versus paying as we go? So I mean, it's, thank you.
Correct.
Councilmember Thompson?
Just a quick follow-up, Mayor Protam. Who sets that standard? When you say that it can't be paid off prior to 10 years, who decides that we're going to pay it off in 30 years?
So the market to some degree and the financial advisor, bond counsel, and your CFO at the time when that, when that's issued. So bonds are contracts. There are 20 individual bonds, they're not one bond. So just like with your mortgage payment, when you agree to pay back, the mortgage company, you say, I want to pay this over 30 years, they tell you, okay, here's your amortization, truth in lending schedule, you get it closing, right? That says, okay, I want to do this, this, and this. Essentially, what that bond says is then the person who's holding the 10th year of that debt, you have said to them, I'm going to continue to pay my interest payments to you for that 10 years uninterrupted. And they pay, they pay a higher rate to get that assurity that you're going to pay them for that 10 years. If you want to, we call it buying it down, you can buy down that call provision and say, I want 100% call at any time. Or what was in vogue a couple of years ago was no call, because the rates were so low, you couldn't envision a time when you would want to refinance that debt because it was that low. So it's a bond structure, bond market question as to how you can sell and what makes essentially an equilibrium on that interest rate that is the lowest possible interest rate you can get while giving the city maximum flexibility. So that 10 years are pretty standard. I've seen it as low as five. I've seen it as high as none. So that's kind of the, we're getting way into the nuance of a bond issue.
Mr. Yates, I, I totally understand. My brain is just clicking over here saying that we're paying off bonds thirty, thirty-five years later, so we're leaving debt for our kids after we're long gone. That's some of the things that I'm questioning in my mind on how can we let this be, but I understand. Go ahead, sir.
Well, just one clarification.
Then maybe can you clarify about what the LGC will allow you to finance?
Right. So, and, and I misspoke earlier. So they're not thirty-year bonds. We don't hold any thirty-year debt. All of our bonds are typically twenty years. So the LGC who, in North Carolina governs your debt issuance, they actually issue the debt for you. They dictate the terms. So they have a certain level of control over how you issue it, what it's issued, what the structure looks like. All of our debt's twenty years and what they also don't want you to issue debt until you have price assurity. So for instance.
So you have what? Say it again.
Price assurity or a guaranteed maximum price. So for instance, we'll look at it in just a minute. We have planned debt for MacArthur Sports Complex. Until that contract is underway and we start moving dirt and we start actually building ball fields and doing that work and we know that it's not going to be five percent more than we anticipated, the LGC will look at us and say, "Continue to do the project. There's legal ways to reimburse yourself. When you know what the cost is finally going to be, come back and we'll borrow the money."
Got you.
Because what they don't want you to do is borrow half of it and then not be able to finish the project. Right? So the LGC is really the key player in this state that you have to go through to get that done. And it takes three, three to four months to get through the LGC to actually your market day where you actually sell the bonds and reimburse. So we have a lot of this pre, this planned debt that as we're finishing projects, we're kind of spending our cash and we'll go out and get reimbursed for that in the future. But the LGC wants to see us complete those projects and get, or get to close to completion. So they're, they know that we can finish with the money we borrowed.
Thank you for that, sir. Appreciate it. Mayor Protam, thank.
So we just went full circle on the beginning of my question.
Yes, ma'am.
So everybody kind of learned the history, but it just went complete full circle and that's why I asked the question. I, I want everybody to be clear. I just want to make sure that the money that is earmarked that we do for Parks and Rec and it doesn't get lost with everything else. So thank you, Mr. Yates. I appreciate that full circle moment. Do I have any other questions? All right, please continue.
Thank you. And thank you. Good questions. So next we had the Public Safety and Housing Geo-Bond. And this is one of those where we've started allocating and appropriating money. We were in various stages of design and so forth. But if you remember, we did about two and a half cents for this piece. That rate, recommended rate now is about one point six cents. And we are building, we are in the phase of building balance because we haven't actually issued debt or issued contracts to get that guaranteed maximum price we were just talking about. What I've put below for you is kind of the safety projects, the public safety projects that are planned. There's about eighty-two million shown and the difference in that is in the nine-one-one center. There is a certain amount, as we talked about, of, of that grant. Remember the grant application we would apply for? And that reduces that project commitment. So right now, if you were to get that grant and we were to build our own nine-one-one center, not that that's a decision at this point, but this is a, this is planning for the, kind of the highest cost scenario. What we were looking at is we'd have about eight-point-six million dollars of capacity, back to the discussion about capacity, of geo-bond capacity approved, unissued, that we can then, if we were to change the nine-one-one center composition, we could go out or if you were to change one of your fire stations that you have in there. You can also see the housing bond. Right now there's, I know we talked about it for the Merchiston Choice effort, but that has, we haven't got that, received that yet. So right now we have the housing bond money just programmed in as a placeholder for a more better descriptive of the project once we kind of get to where we want to spin that money down. The plan would be, and what's programmed in here would be that that money would be issued taxable. So you'd pay a little bit of a premium on it, but that also alleviates the tax restriction. So typically when you issue geo-bonds, they're tax exempt, which means they have to be for a public purpose. They have, they're restricted in investments and so forth. Well, and you couldn't use it to build private housing, essentially is what it comes down to. But if you issue it as taxable, those restrictions fall away. We can create trust funds. We can do a number of other factors. So right now we've planned or structured it to be able to have the most opportunity and the widest spectrum of, of options possible. That will obviously change as we get a better clarity around what we'll do. So this is kind of the thumbnail sketch of the Public Safety and Housing Geo-Bond. Same concept, we're building balance. Then over the twenty-year period, we'll spin that balance down so that we get to about a balance of somewhere between five hundred thousand and a million dollars in any given year. That's kind of the floor we set just to ensure we can always pay the debt payments and so forth. So I'll be happy to answer any questions about that component.
Yes, sir.
Hold on one second. I have Councilmember Thompson and then Councilmember Hare.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Just a quick question. We all know that in our strategic plan, that we know that public safety is our number one priority.
Yes, sir.
So we always want to make sure that we have the numbers right and the, and the, the needs of our first responders correct. But just refresh my memory. Give us the locations of, of Fire Station sixteen, nine and two.
I'm going to have to defer to Chief Dove on the geographic locations.
So we did not include the one that you're going to build right by the Westover area? That's nine. Okay, okay. That's, that's what I wanted to. So those numbers are not figured into this budget? Even though we have already acquired the land and know that that's what we're going to do?
It is the cost of, sorry. The cost of those stations is represented in this capital project fund that is on slide six. Is that what you?
I think that's where it wraps.
Yes. And so those are the cost of those.
Okay, I got you.
And the debt service for that work is part of the one point six cents that he's talking about. So yes, that is showing is fully funded.
Okay. And that's coming out of the general obligation bond?
Yes, sir.
That's why I wanted to make sure. Thank you, sir. Say, say, well, I see it. Eight-point-six million. I got you. I got it.
I was just saying that the, the land acquisitions in fiscal year twenty-six, you got about a year in design, so your building's in twenty-seven for Firehouse nine, right?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Count, thank you. Councilmember Hare.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Mr. Yates, you stated, well, give me some clarity first before I drill into my question. On the housing bond, the geo, the geo, the, the funding for our housing bond and its twelve mil, did you just say that? Explain how, how you just said it could be used, because I thought I heard something about it had to be a taxable. Explain it before.
So there, there are two types of bonds. There are tax exempt and taxable. Under the tax exempt, that allows the bondholder to receive that, essentially receive that interest earnings every year and not pay taxes on it. When you do that, that restricts the bonds to what is referred to as a public purpose. And that public purpose definition is very narrow. Fire stations, parks, streets, police stations, those kinds of things, infrastructure. However, cities and municipalities, counties, governments can issue taxable debt as well. So it doesn't benefit the bondholder as much, but it also alleviates all the restrictions that go with the debt. So if we issue taxable debt, then that money can be used for any legal purpose in North Carolina. So you're still governed by the Constitution and you're still governed by one fifty-nine. But as far as how you invest it, if you create a perpetual housing trust fund, if you will, you're not allowed to invest tax-exempt bonds to make money. You can invest taxable bonds under the law to create a regenerating fund, if you will. Or you can spend that on a development that's not necessarily public purpose, but meets the legal restrictions. So what it does is it gives you a whole, a whole spectrum of options versus being narrowly boxed into that public purpose requirement. To do that, you will pay a little bit of a premium because the bondholder now has to pay taxes on it. But it gives you maximum flexibility as a council, on the taxable bond. But that's the maximum flexibility that you can have as far as a council to be able to use that for, for any, for any legal purpose.
And, and, and so am I understanding then the untaxable we cannot use for low-income housing?
It depends on the nature and the type. So we would, right now we don't have a project to look at in front of us. But if you, let's say you brought a six-million-dollar project, one of the analysis we would do is to say, "Okay, does it meet the test for taxable, our, our tax-exempt fund, funding? Or is it a taxable?" And we'd have to work with our bond counsel to kind of look at that and see what the rules would be. So, but right now in our planning phase, we want to plan for your maximum flexibility. And then when you get, when we get more narrow in on what we're going to actually do, then we can maybe redefine it as, you know, reprogram it as tax-exempt. We just don't know the answer to that yet.
So, so when we apply for the, for the bonds, well, okay, I got it.
Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, I won't go any further with it. Okay.
And I will point out one other thing that's not on this list and I neglected to include it. The, when we purchased the police station on. Grayford Road, thank you. Cross Creek. When we purchased that station, we did use about one-point-six million dollars of this geo-bond to purchase that. And it's not reflected on here because I think that transaction was going through as we were putting this together. So I just wanted to clarify that one component that's missing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on this piece? Welcome back, Mayor.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, I see y'all made it to all the way to page six. So I just want to kind of maybe see if we can let you, let you run through, run through these and then we'll, we'll kind of take breaks for, for questions if we can, council, just to kind of give them time to present it.
Sure. So the next.
I know. Let's write it, let's write it down. I want to make sure we, we, we fruitful with it. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Got the highlighter.
The next piece was the Public Infrastructure Geo-Bond. This was a little different. If you remember, this is for streets, sidewalks and those improvements. And I'll show you the project list in just a moment. But the funding source for this debt was the license fee. The city has the capacity to charge a thirty-dollar fee, which is what we charge. Five of that goes to the transit system. Five of that comes to the general fund to support public services activities. Then the twenty dollars of it, which was the increase you made a couple of years ago, goes one hundred percent to fund this infrastructure program. The twenty dollars generates more than what is necessary to pay the debt service. So that funding then becomes that second line where it says motor, pay-go funding, motor vehicle license fee pay-go. So as that debt declines, we have reprogrammed that debt then to continue a pay-go funding of that same infrastructure. So more money for streets, more money for sidewalks, bike lanes, all that stuff. So the projects that are included, and this is a twenty-dollar fee, and as you can see, the cumulative balance below takes you to about five hundred thousand, which I said was about our target, give or take. Sheila and the team have been very good about programming this. We have almost exhausted this, these funds over the last few years and they're all planned out. So things such as railroad crossing, safety improvements in transportation, thoroughfare, street lighting, bridge preservation, resurfacing, sidewalks and bike lanes. You can see that a hundred and ten million is, is the total program. That's way more than the twenty-five that was allocated. But this is a mix of other funding sources as well. So it's not all one hundred percent debt, but all of the vehicle license fee goes for these programs. And then some general fund dollars and some grant funds and those other things. Okay?
So before you go to the next page, any, any questions? I did have a question on this page and we'll do it by page just so we don't, you know, kind of co-mingle our thoughts with that. Question for you. So maybe this is a public service question. Give us the number of miles of sidewalk laid or streets paved prior to the bond, compared to after the bond, prior to the bond, so that we can get an idea about increased capacity of what's, what has ramped up. You know, the bond gave us shot of, of resources that we had. So tell us, tell us the, what we were doing beforehand and after, if you can.
If you don't off the top of your head, we can, if you don't know off the top of your head, we can.
Come on, y'all. This is a budget. Yeah.
Speaking of the infrastructure bond, the geo-bond was supposed to accelerate the sidewalk and amounts of repaving that we were supposed to do in the city. That said, with some changes in the general fund, where we previously had general fund subsidies towards sidewalk as well as towards repaving, those have been cut back. And so I'm not sure to the extent that we intended we have accelerated. We were successful in receiving grants and so there has been some evening out. In other words, we received between four to six million dollars worth of grants through works of our team. And so that has evened out. Some of that acceleration, we'll be able to give you specific numbers at the next meeting.
I appreciate that, Ms. Sheila. So if I'm understanding you correct, we told the citizens that we wanted to get this infrastructure bond to help us accelerate this, okay? There was general fund dollars that we were using out of fund balance to, to do that. Then we got the bond passed and you're saying that the, the general fund dollars decreased. So we have a net increase of a small amount of percentage? So really, you know, that's, that is a critical number because, you know, that's, it's kind of a hat trick. You know, if we're telling the citizens that we, you pay us extra tax so that we can hurry up and get this done, we're getting killed on our walkability scores and, and bike lane lack of. And you're telling me that, that we cut back the funding in another place that nets no new acceleration?
Correct. We have traditionally always provided some general fund monies towards sidewalk and repaving. Traditionally for sidewalk for sure. And we had to cut back on that for other reasons that Jeff can speak to. That said, we were successful in receiving some grant money that was unprecedented for the sidewalk program this, this fiscal year. And that has offset some of that decrease in acceleration. But had we not received that grant money, we would have likely not accelerated to the rate that we had thought. And there may still not be a full acceleration like had previously been anticipated.
Thank you, Ms. Sheila. Jeff, that is a huge concern of mine that we've taken and slowed it down from one place that was being contributed from the general fund. So the bond really didn't have any new effect, even though there's new taxes given, getting levied. So I do, I would like specific numbers as to, to show the trends prior to the bond and, and after, specifically going from the general fund to, to this public service, public service. I think Councilmember Benavente has a, has a question. Oh, okay. All right. All right. Okay, council, any other questions? Councilmember Green.
This can probably be a parking lot item. I'm just looking forward to the future because we know it's a possibility. We just passed the resolution for the Powell bill and not, and having that not stop. My concern would be that if those funds disappeared, we've got to find those funds to replace what we're talking about here. Maybe not in the geo-bonds side of it, but we've got to find the money. So I would hope that we can keep that sitting there. I know that Assistant City Manager Phelps is working on keeping us, you know, up to date on that. But that is a concern and it should be because if those funds go away for our size city, then we're looking at potentially having a lot of issues.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. Council, any other questions or comments?
So we'll point out, one of the things that you'll see throughout your capital budget as you kind of look through the detail and, and work through that, which we don't have today in front of you, but is illustrated in this program, where you see things like the million dollars a year where it runs out through thirty-one or the five hundred thousand dollars a year for sidewalk programming. What we've done is looked at ways to continue to be able to provide. What we've done is looked at ways to continue to be able to provide regular, ongoing annual funding for what I would refer to as replacement or renewal. So, we did this with tennis court paving, for instance. And a lot of times, what ends up happening is because there's been an inconsistent investment in that over time, you get a bubble in the system where you have to do a deeper repair or you have to do a full replacement versus ongoing maintenance. So, things like Tokay Tennis Court or the Mazarick Park Tennis Court, it's not the tennis court or the other courts. We have planned funding to get those redone. And then we have planned ongoing funding out over the years to ensure those get done on a maintenance cycle. Versus, so you don't have to close them down or you don't get to conditions that are unplayable, but you're continually maintaining those. This is, when you look at some of these projects and you see that kind of leveled out over the years, that's what that is. So, instead of having a jigsaw pattern to your projects, what you have is a nice level funding pattern. In any year that all of that funding is not exhausted, it becomes available in the following year, plus the new money to be able to do projects and to do that resurfacing and maintenance of your system, the additional sidewalks and those things. So, it's a little tweak on philosophy, but we've been able to kind of start to hone in on sustaining. You remember during CIP, we talked about maintaining our assets. And that's one of the things that we really strive to with the departments this year is finish what we started, maintain our assets. So, I just wanted to kind of illustrate that because you can see it clearly in several of these projects. While there may not be an exact definition of what that'll be in 2029, there's funding programmed to be able to do that because we know we'll get to that project. We'll know what that is when we get there, but we want to go ahead and plan for it.
All right, Councilman Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question on the funding, on where funding comes from, from, and everybody knows I'm the sidewalk guy. And I read the 2018 pedestrian plan that we had on our administrative board for Monday and looked at some of the locations where we had intended to put sidewalks. Where does the funding come from, from DOT projects, from sidewalks? Because I know DOT is putting sidewalks in from the VA Hospital all the way down to Robeson Street. They're putting some on Strickland Bridge Road. They're putting some on Fisher Road, Stony Point, Dundee Road. They're putting them on Gillis Hill Road. And I think the percentage is 75, 25, or is it 50/50? And where does that money come from?
So, in those cases, and I'll look to Sheila if I, and the team, if I, if they can put a finer point on it. But typically, it'll happen when you have, for instance, the sidewalk program. If there's sidewalk funding that comes down and we have to have a match for that, we would look toward that program to say, okay, we got the grant dollars in place. Now, let's do the specific project. We'll come back to council, appropriate the grant dollars, and identify the match through those programs. So, this sets you up so that you have some of this planned out over time. Now, obviously, the bigger ones we'll have to deal with as those come up, but it gives us a place to go for some of that work. Byron and Sheila, did I get that? Brian, did I get that? Set, help clarify?
A little bit. Because most of the times when it comes to us, and I've seen it, it comes on consent. Does it, so it doesn't really give us an explanation on where the money is coming from. I know all of it doesn't come from grants.
Correct. So, when you see typically on your agenda, and we can do a better job highlighting that for you if, if that's a concern, the, when you see it being reprogrammed from another, what I refer to as a task within a program, that's where that money comes down. So, we move the money around to try to use it as a multiplier, if you will.
So, let me iterate just a little bit more then. So, we're talking, and the mayor mentioned about the, the general obligation bond that we talked about for sidewalks and stuff, how we're supposed to accelerate that program. And that's different from DOT projects. So, the, the point I'm trying to make is, is any of that money coming out of there that is also stalling and slowing down that process because we're using money for that, for DOT, and not for our general obligation bond?
I'm going to have to defer to Byron on that one.
All right, so depending on the, the type of DOT project it is, depends on the split. Something like Rayford Road, we would have appropriated that money years ago because that project through municipal agreements. But typically, if there is a requested improvement on a DOT project, that's normally a 50/50 split. Yeah, but it's like some of the, the more recent ones that you've seen come through, through municipal agreements, those are an 80/20 split where DOT pays 80 and we do 20. But this GO bond funding is funding that 20%.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, the DOT project is being funded out of the GO bond, that 20%, that 80/20%? Thank you, sir.
So, when we took the sidewalk projects, the GO bond sidewalk projects the council to approve, we, the GO bond was going to fund 100% of those projects. We got the grant funding from DOT after that. So, now we only have to use 20% of that toward the...
Good deal. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilman Benevente?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, I feel like Byron, you know, I think gave a good example. But Mr. Yates says you're working on getting answers to Mayor Colvin's inquiry on, you know, acceleration or potentially the lack thereof. I think sharing with us some reasons why that doesn't always happen would be necessary information too because it sounds like, you know, sometimes we're at the, you know, I don't want to say the mercy of DOT, but maybe just, you know, we want to ride their wave when that comes. And, you know, just because we issued the bond doesn't mean 100 miles is going to get laid in the next 12 months. What are some of the factors? What are some of the reasonable, understandable reasons that, again, things don't happen like that in a given year just because we issued the bond? So, whatever the number is, whether, you know, I like some of those complimentary reasons why as well.
We'll be happy to gather that information along with the questions.
So, so just not to belabor, if we go to G61 under the public service summary, so, as we look at the fun, funding sources, and I just want to make sure I'm reading this correct, Mr. Yates. So, at, all the way at the bottom, the last category, uses by fund. So, the general fund is roughly saying in 2024's budget was 12.3 million. It was revised, that I guess it actually used 12.9 million. But then, the recommended budget for this year is 8.5, which is a reduction of 4.4 million. Am I reading that right?
Yes, sir. That, and keep it in mind, this doesn't include the capital.
I get, I got that. But, but basically, none of these figures included the capital, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we're comparing apples with apples. So, you get a $4.4 million reduction from the general fund, completely washes away whatever this bond is. I mean, and as the residents, the, the whole purpose of this was to get it done faster because we were doing a pay-go, then we accelerated it probably five or seven years ago to add a million, two million more to the sidewalk just to help us catch up because we, we're way behind in street paving, our ratings were low. And then we got the bond done, which we advocated for that. But tell me why there's a four and a half million dollar reduction in that?
Absolutely. So, what you're seeing there is the Powell bill money is now being recorded directly into the CIP versus coming into the general fund and showing as a transfer. So, historically, there would have been four or five million dollars, five and a half million dollars of Powell bill funding that came in as a revenue to the general fund, then showed up as a transfer then from, as a public services expenditure or transfer over to the capital program, then when it was, then would be expended and shown as an expenditure in the, as a revenue and expenditure in the capital fund. And with our new ERP implementation and working through that process, we no longer have to show it in the general fund. What we're doing is showing it directly funded into the capital. So, there was not a real reduction in services provided.
Where's that?
It's just clarifying what is in there.
Where's that page?
The, it would be in your capital book. I'm looking for it right now.
So, even, even though that project is shown on the CIP, why are you looking for that to show us how you're allocating that? Even though it's shown on the CIP, it still has a source of funds from somewhere. So, you're saying, does it have its own? Is it going into, when the money comes in, where's it going to? An enterprise fund, a separated fund for this?
It goes into the capital as separate from your operating funds.
Right, because they take so many pennies out of the dollar and it goes to fund those CIP items, right?
There's more than just, it is more than pennies. So, there's grant dollars, there is other contribution, investment earnings, just like of the, any other funds. But what ends up happening is, versus having it come through the general fund out to that, it's recorded, now recorded directly in that fund. And I will get you a page number. Which one? Page 130 in the CIP?
Where's the CIP book?
So, for instance, if you were to look at, if you're looking at the Public Services Departmental Summary, you can see that the funding, the federal funding is the big chunk that changed from last year to this year and some other, or I'm sorry, from, in '26, you have about $42 million going toward the public services projects, and that's that full slate of projects below. But we didn't short the program from the Powell bill money. That was just recording the Powell bill money directly here where it should be recorded.
Where, where, where is it notated at?
It would be the state funding.
So, state funding 3.7.
And a portion of that is kept in the general fund because there is operating costs that Sheila and the team have that are Powell bill-eligible expenses. So, it's a mix, it's a little bit of a mix each year that we do through the general fund directly and then we do through projects.
Now, 2025, it was showing the state funding at 45. What was that because of grants?
That's the historical.
Oh, okay, it's the cumulative total?
Yeah, that's the cumulative total of the open projects. And you can see down at the bottom where it says unassigned fund capital, fund balance, unassigned capital fund. That's from the project closures. Remember, we had that long conversation about project closures. As we close projects, then that money goes back to the program to support the projects and keep the, to...
So, you're running a fund balance under public services? So, public services is like its own enterprise funding?
This is the, it's not just, it's the streets and infrastructure fund. But yes, that public services manages this fund. So, all the capital funds have their own fund balance for leftover pieces and investments and those kinds of things. And we reprogram those or recommend to you to reprogram those for capital projects.
So, what's the, what was the conversation the council was having about closed-out projects, excess funds coming back to the general fund for reprogramming, repurposing? The ones that are eligible for repurposing? How's that different from what you're talking about?
It, it is, it's not. So, because some of these, some of the money that is in that 1.3 million is restricted because of the nature of the funding.
I understand.
You can feed it back to the projects to be able to do the streets projects that are recommended.
So, all of that's not restricted that way, right? So, how do you, how do you address the council's interest of moving the money that is not restricted by use back to the general fund?
I would say in the public services, there is not, most of the funding, with the exception of the general fund pay-go, is going to be restricted because it was Powell bill money, it was federal grant dollars, it was GO bond or planned GO bond money, those kinds of things. If the council has an interest in taking that 1.3 and bringing that back to the general fund, we can look and analyze that to do that. But our recommendation and what's recommended here is, with the interest in knowing council's interest in sidewalks and bike paths and streets, was to reprogram that money to support that effort versus bringing that back for what would be one-time items in the general fund.
Okay, all right. So, Councilmember here. And Handro sat there.
So, staying on the same item on, on G61, as we look over at the, I'm, I'm looking at the stormwater. Whenever we did the bond, and a lot of my conversation was support with stormwater, stormwater runoff that was flooding some of the areas. So, still on, on some of the same jest, as we go further, are you going to, and I guess it's maybe in the CIP book, which I don't have with me, is it going to be an itemized list on where some of that was used for those improvements? Because the whole time that it's been done and up till today, and I drive through my district quite often, I have not seen where any forms of improvement for that stormwater flooding runoff in areas that I spoke about at meetings. So, is there going to be an itemized list of where that, that funding was, was used to help?
So, in the stormwater program, there, we have an itemized list today in the stormwater fund and that is supported by stormwater rate and stormwater debt. There is not direct, to my knowledge, not direct GO bond money covering any stormwater project at this point. Maybe ancillary to a project that they're doing if they're tearing up something. They put it back that, in accordance with stormwater standards.
Yes, sir.
But as far as funding major stormwater renewal projects, those, those all come from the stormwater fund and the stormwater rate.
And, and the reason that that continues to disturb me is that I thought I got support from staff to have, for us to have those kind of conversations in the communities that if you accept and approve this bond, we're going to be able to be coming back to improve some stormwater flooding in some areas. Especially, I mean, I have areas where it's not like a storm, maybe just like what we've had over the last few days where it's been a continuous rain, and it could be a slight rain, but it's continuous for a few days. I'm, I'm, I'm confused and disheartening about it because it's like we, you, we asked, you, you told us that we could, we will make some priorities for the GO bond and making lists, and then we didn't get, so that's why I was saying, well, I didn't see it here. And I've been through the books, just been looking for certain things. And, 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 and like you said, maybe it's in the CIP, but you're saying that this, what I'm speaking of, is not even in the CIP?
If you have a specific area or project, we can answer that pri, that question.
Yeah, I'm talking about in the Bonny Doom area. I mean, they get flooded out with the, I mean, I'm just, I, I wasn't trying to be so specific right now with everybody because everybody's going to have concern for their own area. I was just saying, did we have a priority list where some of that GO bond money, I could at least start seeing where it was doing what we spoke to our communities about? That was all.
If I can jump in, Byron, come on up, I guess. Yeah, there we go.
All right, so...
Worked great for Sheila.
So, so with the general obligation bond, we did not have stormwater-specific projects for that. That was not in the, I guess, whatever people voted on. The referendum. However, if there were stormwater issues that were incidental to a project, I'll use Helen Street, which will start construction in a few weeks.
Right, right.
There are some flooding issues on Helen Street.
Yes, sir, it is.
To install the sidewalk, we have to fix the stormwater.
Correct.
So, that, so that...
Second phase part of it, correct.
Yeah, so that, that will be handled with that project, which is using bond funding, and we'll start construction before the end of the month.
So, before you even go any further, then in our CIP book, is that mentioned? Because I didn't see it, and I looked for it. I'm just asking.
I mean, it's an, it's an identified project, says Helen Street sidewalk and the stuff that I see.
I'll relook again.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Councilman Mahandros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Yates, this slide that's on the screen, is that a typo? The total on appropriation date, the first column? 57 million?
It isn't, I apologize for that.
And that makes, that makes the total on the last column incorrect?
Correct.
Okay, just checking.
Yep, and I will correct that slide and get your revision. It was adding up the total for the whole, the whole public services capital program, not just those pieces. Thank you for pointing that out.
All right, Mr. Yates, back to you.
The next piece, if you remember, going back, the council has had a committed 5.07 cents dedicated to capital programming over time. When we looked at the available funding, how we would fund that, your existing debt service for outstanding installment financings for vehicles and whatnot, we programmed that and we're recommending 4 cents. This is a little higher than what the revenue-neutral rate would be in this case. This is a little higher than what the revenue neutral rate would be in this case, but it is largely driven, if not completely driven, by the limited obligation bond. So if you look at the bottom of this schedule, you see the 18.7 million. That is the debt service that is, the debt service payments for the MacArthur Park Sports Complex. Going back to last year's CIP, you had a small portion, several million dollars of GO debt from your Parks and Rec GO bond that was for the MacArthur Park Sports Complex. It needed an additional 18.7 million dollars to be able to build it out to the extent and to the, to what council wanted to see. So the way to do that was to authorize and to push forward with limited obligation bonds. So this program includes that. You can see across the top where it goes to Pago funding, as well as we were referring to earlier. These are the contribution to these different types of projects, our different types of funds from this rate. So for instance, the general government capital, we're recommending a million dollars of that four cents goes to that. And there's a schedule in your CIP book that tells you what all those projects entail. Public safety capital, Parks and Recreation capital, and then transportation capital. As you can see, as Sheila mentioned, as we get past the bond, we start to move back toward having what was reflected in the general fund that is no longer added back to that. The other piece I'll point out, this now includes your vehicles. So the general government capital is largely going to be your fleet replacement for police, fire, and all the, all of the vehicles throughout the city. This, this allows us to then to be able to purchase those when they're available. As we know, we've had supply chain issues and have been challenged in getting trucks. I think the lead time now on a fire truck is four years. So if we ordered it today and we had it spec today, we wouldn't have it for a while. So you can see down the public safety capital where you see six and a half million every other year. What that allows us to do then is program that funding, which will be annual debt service on a fire truck across that, to be able to order it and get it in. So what we've tried to do is match up that funding with the realities and challenges, both with getting it and being able to keep that affordable. So this is just that dedicated capital tax rate plan. There's lots of detail in your capital book about what backs up these numbers. But I wanted to share that with you as we were kind of deconstructing the tax rate. In addition, you see sources over uses. That number, it burns down over, a little bit over time. That keeps us back to that idea of a million to 500,000 is kind of our floor for a fund balance in case something, there's an emergency or some challenges related to this fund. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I did. I found the information I was asking for on page eight, which is the previous page to what you're doing, the sidewalks. So for this year, it, it was 1.2 being recommended, but then it goes down to 500,000 a year, which is less than what we were doing in allocations before, before the bond. We were at least doing a million a year, if I recall. In some years, we pumped it up more than that. So can you speak to that a little bit? Because I'm looking, and also the bike lane program is $100,000. So it's not really making any headway on, on what that is. But those were two, and streetlights, 80,000. You know, I get a lot of calls about people saying that particularly out West, there's not a lot of street lighting and those kind of things. So some of the important citizen-driven ideas, how is that baked into your recommendation?
So what you have, kind of go back, so I'm showing you the public infrastructure GO bond piece for, because you as a council, we've worked as much within that $20 rate to be able to do as much as we can, so.
I'm not talking about license fees, I'm talking about the bonds now.
Right, well, but that, they, they run together. So the way you're funding your annual debt service on those bonds is through the license fee. That license fee generates more than the annual cost of that debt. And as that debt pays off, you get more funding, more funding becomes available to go toward those Pago projects. In addition, when we look at the, this slide, the, the dedicated capital rate, as those, those project funds wane a little bit, we start to add then part of that four cents going toward that public infrastructure.
I got that, Jeff. I don't, I don't want to take the council in too many different directions. So one is you're talking about the $20 license plate fee, okay? I get that. The other is the extra penny or two that's added to the tax rate behind this, this infrastructure bond, okay? That's what sort of fun I'm talking about.
There was, we never added additional tax rate.
When we passed the bonds, it was public safety, it was infrastructure.
Correct.
And so you don't recall it?
No, you had three components, you're exactly right, $60 million
housing.
For, for public safety.
Yep.
$12 million for housing and $25 million for infrastructure.
Right.
The only piece, the two and a half cents funded, was the 60 million for public safety and the 12 million, well, now the 12 million dollars for housing. At that point, it wouldn't fit. So the two and a half cents generated sufficient funding to pay the debt service at that time of the 60 million. The 25 million, as a council, if you remember, we looked at four cents, we brought that down to two and a half. In lieu of that additional penny and a half, which is right at about 2.2 million, that additional penny and a half, what we did is, or you as a council, added that license plate fee in lieu of the ad valorem tax rate. So there is not additional tax rate from that two and a half cents that supports the public infrastructure GO.
Wait, wait, wait.
It is 100% supported by the $20 license.
So out of the $90 million citizen-approved bond passed, 60 was public safety.
Correct.
It was, was it 25?
$25 million was infrastructure, correct.
And 12 housing. So the 25 infrastructure, how are you saying that it, it doesn't exist? I'm, I'm, I'm lost.
It does exist. It's funded through the $20 licensing fee because at the time, the council's direction and desire was to not do the four cent tax rate. So what we did at that time was we swapped the vehicle license fee for the ad valorem rate. And that $20 vehicle license fee is what supports this piece of the bond.
The bond just gave the city the ability to borrow up to those amounts for those things, correct? Right. So now what you're doing is saying, this is how we plan to pay for it. So how are you telling me that the $20 helped us borrow up to the, what's the total amount that we have for infrastructure? Huh?
25 million.
25 million? So how, how is, how are you saying that that is going to, to help the cities fund 20, 25 million dollars with a $20 license plate fee?
So when license plate fee generates about two point, in 2026, will generate about 2.6 million dollars. When you go to the market and issue the 25 million, which we're about to do because Sheila and her team have almost exhausted that 25 million, then that annual debt service will be right around two and a half million.
They've almost exhausted the 25 million that hadn't been borrowed yet? So what do you?
So we, we advance fund.
I got you. So what, what projects, I'm not saying acceleration of projects and I'm not saying future acceleration of projects. So what 25 million did they advance that they're now going to use this money to pay back?
It is in the, it is in the projects that have been completed, which aren't on this list, but it's in the appropriation to date. And it's in the recommended, the four million in street resurfacing and some of these other projects that are on this list that we were looking at. When you get out past '26 and into '27, you start to then use pay-as-you-go from the four cents we were just talking about and from the $20 licensing fee to cash fund projects at that point.
So I'm tracking that. So if they use that to accelerate the projects by using cash funds and they're going to issue the bond to pay back the fund.
Right.
Then that should have been an easy answer to say that we went from this amount of projects to this amount because we accelerated $25 million worth of projects. So help me reconcile those two realities. So what you're doing is you're saying we, the voters approved the bond and now I'm going to do 10 projects instead of one. I accelerated it. And now I'm going to get my money back with, to pay this debt service back as I issue this. So the answer should have been clear that, yes, in the previous year, we did 12 projects, but because the voters passed this and we accelerated it, we were able to do 25 projects. So can you help me answer that?
Yeah, and for specifics on that, we had the Public Infrastructure GO Bond Admin Report on your council agenda Monday night that goes into detail on each project that we're utilizing this for, the projects that we've completed and then the projects that we're currently doing.
So just percentages, Byron, I don't want like street names.
I'll use round, I'll just use round numbers. So resurfacing, typically, we would do anywhere between four and $5 million in, in resurfacing. Two years ago, because of the bond, we did $11 million instead of four. This past year, we would have done a little over $8 million instead of four. What we're proposing resurfacing this year is a little over $8 million where we have done four. So I would say we're doubling our resurfacing efforts this current year and last, last year. Two years ago, we kind of, we did a $7 million GO bond one. So I'd say you're two and a half times that first year. So that's the resurfacing portion.
Okay, now that, that's what I'm talking about. So if you can duplicate that for sidewalks and for, yeah, all right. Council, is that, was that the? Okay, so Councilman Benevente, okay. I'm having trouble knowing if it's the mic Benevente or the actual Benevente. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. You know, I, I, I think that we got to some really good answers just in that extensive exchange, which I think makes it worth it in the end. But, you know, Mr. Yates, Byron, you guys are doing a great job because I think you guys have answers for everything. I, I want us to maybe ask our questions without kind of making it seem like the team doesn't want to give us what we are asking for. I think they have answers to give. And I guess I just want to like make sure we're framing these questions in a way that is like, you know, we're, we're trying to gather an understanding, not necessarily accusing them of, you know, having failed to spend all this money or failed to have produced all these results. I, I, they, they clearly have. I mean, they're pointing, they're telling you what they've done. I just want to make sure we're, we're kind of addressing these, these interests and information in a way that is a little bit more collaborative and a less like we are, you know, giving somebody a third degree or the dragnet is really going to, you know, good cop, bad cop them into admitting things that haven't been done. So I, I just, it's my turn, Mr. Mayor.
I haven't said anything, I'm just laughing at the irony of it all.
Yeah, line of questioning, so, you know, let's, let's, let's give equal time here. Mr. Yates, Byron, keep up the great work. Keep answering our questions because it sounds like you guys have an answer for these things. I just don't want us to phrase things in a way that makes it seem as though, you know, work hasn't been done. And just let's, let's be a little bit more collaborative, I think, today. Thank you.
All right, so thank you for that advice. You're the perfect one to give it. All right, so Mr. Yates, go ahead, sir.
Okay. So that was all on the dedicated capital tax rate. I just wanted to show you. And as we mentioned earlier, what this rate covers is the debt service on the MacArthur Park, the additional debt service on MacArthur Park, but also is the funding source for our ongoing maintenance and renewal programs through Parks and Recreation. It funds a, a chunk of safe, public safety capital maintenance there. So a variety of projects and so forth, as you can look in your document and see. The next, talking a little bit about general fund revenue and expenditures. As we talked earlier, and when we looked at the budgetary landscape, it, our, our recommended revenue at the recommended tax rate for, for the operations generates about $200,000 or $200 million. The total operations, including the restored services that we couldn't fund at the lower rate and some expansions, which we'll go into in a second, that total budget's about 205 million. This includes transferring about $3 million. So there's $5.2 million down below planned fund balance usage. The biggest chunk of that is 3 million, a little over $3 million for the Civil War History Museum and about $900,000 to finish up the ERP project. And additional money, when we have your elections coming up, we want to use fund balance to fund your election so that helps keep that rate down as low as possible. So we've balanced all of these revenues, and if we go all the way back to the very beginning, right? We balanced all of those different tax rates to get to the 44.95. So at this point, it's a balloon. So if you push in or take out from one spot to keep that balanced, there has to be additions or deletions. Back to the question, I think, about the parking lot. So when we look at the parking lot, there'll have to be, when we start talking about, we'll look at how we would add resources for those where there's consensus. But the service package you have in front of you, as we talked about during the budgetary landscape discussion, is slightly less than what the directors asked for as far as funding with all the things they see as service demand, but slightly more than just last year's budget, or just the service package from last year. It's hard to say last year's budget, but we, it's a service issue because we have inflation costs and so forth. So with that, keeping up with that demand, as we talked earlier, this is just a schedule of those increases with their goals. We, we talked a little bit about this Monday night. We have marketing and communications, PIO, a content creator, and some conversion of part-time to full-time to help in the mailroom. City attorney, this is a paralegal, senior paralegal, and an additional attorney. Human resources development, this is the record digitization, as we talked about, as well as a public compensation study. We'll look at that next week. Jerry Clip will come in and talk to you about that a little bit. I know there's some concerns over studying the issue and concerns over public safety compression. So we'll look a little more detail in that. IT positions, this is the three positions we talked about. Security, it's the mobile device management, and a database administrator, I believe. Is that right, Willie? Okay. Fire additional inspectors, this is four additional inspectors. Development services positions, these are inspectors to ensure timely services to the building community and keep up with the changing legislation. Public services, building.
How many positions did you say for, for development services for 600,000?
It is, I would, do you know off the top of your head? Four. And it's some salary increases and some, and some career progression for inspectors as well, I believe.
Can we get some breakdown on that? Because I know you're shorthanded, so I just want to make sure that you're covering enough for that.
And we'll provide you the detail on three lists for Monday. The, the detailed list of the SL2 items that are not, are the current services that were not recommended. So that's your question, what was asked for and not included. The service, the additional expansion or new investments that are being recommended, which is this list, which has the detail. And then we'll also provide you of the things departments asked for that are not recommended, what did they ask for that was an expansion? So we'll give you more detail around that. I just wanted to kind of hit the high points with you again today. Then we have the Public Services Business Manager position. This is funded out of the stormwater and solid waste funds, not out of the general fund.
Council, Councilman Mahendros had a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was actually on the previous slide, and I got one for this slide too. But do we know after third, third quarter fiscal year '25, what the general fund balance is approximately? And or what it's projected to be after June 30?
We.
Ballpark, I won't hold you to the dollar.
I believe Kimberly said about 32 million, is that right? About 18%.
18%? And then if we go along with the proposed budget, including using one-time 5,238,500, that would bring us down from 32 to 27, which is about what percent?
At the end of '26.
So are they going to give us the breakdown by percentage?
What percentage does that?
It was 17%.
We'll go from 18 to what, 15 or 12?
It is on page E22 in your document.
Thank you, E22. And then on the next slide that you are, the, number one there, marketing communications, that's how many new positions, one, two?
Two.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, Councilman Davis. So I think as we talk about this, keeping up with the demand, I don't think, so I believe that a lot of residents don't understand the demand, the emails that we get. And so Michelle Smith-Rodin is phenomenal. But council, I believe that it's time for us to get an additional person to help out with the demand that she's getting. So if you can bake her another position for her.
What is this?
Michelle, I don't know what's, what's her title? Community Engagement Director. I believe we need another one of those to help with some of the demand of emails that we get every day and all day. So if you can bake that in here somewhere.
Are we making a parking lot list?
Yeah, parking lot list.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's, it's empty right now. So I know we've had a lot of discussion, do we have any? Huh? You'll help out? Jennifer, I know you're capturing the notes. Did you, just any of those items, when you get a chance to help scan over that, that, that we were kind of stuck on? More information or question on, that, that'll be helpful.
And to, to the point, she's not alone. She actually supervises the call center and we have positions. And to, to the point, um, she's not alone. She actually supervises the call center, and we have positions, um, she has staff. Where we really could use some help, and it's not necessarily represented, is we need help with some of our public records requests. And that is always a balancing act of things that y'all don't see. Uh, but we are, uh, we have a process and a rhythm for that, that, um, we didn't even ask for, because again, it's.
So whatever department that is in, we need some more help in that department. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Davis. And then, um, Council, I wanted to talk to, on the development services side, uh, for consideration. Don't have to have it today, but, um, you know, I know we had, uh, are in the process of, of relooking at our processes. Um, it had, it had been suggested that other communities have an expedited process that they pay a, pay a fee for, um, that may work. And so as we bring on these extra personnel, um, because our department or our process and PWC are one and the same or integrated sometimes, it could be an opportunity. And I spoke to Chairman Davis there, and they may have a, they're interested in hearing a little bit more. If there's some kind of expedited process and maybe, you know, both are short engineering and staff that, that could be collaborative in sharing or either, um, uh, integrated into some kind of expedited process. You know, in other words, a, a developer builder may pay an extra five or 10,000, um, to have plans moved along. Or, or a citizen, you know, a church or whoever, uh, but it's just offered. But it, it may help offset some of the costs of, of that, because 600,000, the reason I asked, hope it brings on enough personnel that we, that we get it, because I know they're, they're, they're shorthanded, keeping up with the demand right now, so.
The $600,000 to the mayor's point. We gave you a presentation maybe three months ago, four months ago, that talked about how the changes in the state law were necessitating that level three inspectors only do level three work, or level one couldn't do, level two couldn't do. And we were looking at the, at the staffing that we had, um, who were level three. And we brought to y'all the idea of incentivizing them, but also adding positions. Because, um, Kelly, did I, what part of that am I missing? Because that was also, but also about expediting with the additional positions. So that's somewhat baked in, Mayor, as well, along with those lines.
Are we, uh, are, are we in the, are we making the parking lot list now?
No, sir.
Trying to capture stuff that we had questions about.
And Mr. Mayor, are we, um, if you go in, if y'all will wait a moment, um, we actually have on the slides in your, in your packet, we have built out the parking lot of some items already. Um, but we wanted to make sure y'all had an understanding of where the revenues and the expenditures were before we started adding. Because one of the, this is, this is one of the things I'd say, I had a question this morning from a council member about what we did at the last revaluation. The last revaluation, the city staff recommended that the council adopt a rate of 52.66. The council did not adopt the staff's recommended tax rate. You went to 40, kept it at 49.95. And so what ended up happening was, and then we had the issues with COVID. We had the issues with, um, salary issues, um, with fire, police, and other areas. And it became one of those challenges of where, within their dedicated revenue streams that we had, how do we accomplish all of those things? When we came and brought to you last time about how we were going to pay for the, um, debt for the $97 million in geobond referendums. Staff proposed a tax rate increase, um, and council said, no, we can't raise the rates that high. So we did not put forward the money to repay the $12 million for the housing at that time. And we justified it by saying, we don't have a use for it right now, but when we do, we will add it to the tax rate. We also took out, was it Jeff, did you say, two cents on, on the infrastructure piece?
A penny and a half.
A penny and a half on the infrastructure piece. And there was a robust conversation that the council had at that moment about whether or not having a vehicle license fee increase was equitable or not versus it going, and there was a whole lot of discussions about, well, should the mall pay for infrastructure when the mall has got to pay for their own infrastructure? Because it, you know, they don't generate, they don't, they have to put in their own stormwater retention malls, they have to do their own sidewalks. Development has to pay for itself. So we're talking about sidewalks in residential areas, and who should pay for that? So there was all of this very robust conversation that we had. And so how the team tried to design the presentation today was to let you know what is the components of the recommended tax rate. Um, giving you the information as we did earlier about revenue neutrality and what that rate is, was 38.76?
Correct.
Um, and how we're recommending a rate that's six cents above it. These are, um, based upon keeping up with the man, these are the items on this slide, which we've heard from council. We've heard from the community, and we're also, as management team, saying, we believe we need to bake into the cake. And they are currently funded in the budget. But there are opportunities for us to, to delay some of these items, depending on, on council's interest, way or the other. But we do, I think he's almost there. You all have stormwater left.
Stormwater, solid waste.
Stormwater, solid waste, and we're not recommending, um, uh, at this point, uh, fee increases to that. But at the very end, we do have, um, a parking lot, um, of some of the items that we've heard about from your meeting. Not this past Monday, but from Monday, week ago, on the public safety items.
Go ahead, Councilmember Mahendra.
4.7 million, uh, investment not recommended. Is there a future slide for that, or what is in that 4.7 million?
We're gonna provide you those lists, um, early next week.
Okay.
Of what was requested. It's in your document, but it's spread out across the document.
Which document?
While we're working.
This one?
No, your budget document.
This one?
The, your operating budget.
This one, okay.
Right. So to, to make it concise and put it together and kind of just a schedule for you to see, we're gonna provide that to you. And then, um, after the public safety conversation next Thursday, we'll come back. Recommendation would be come back on the 29th, and then talk through any of those additional items that council has interest in from that, um, the current services that didn't get funded, or the additional recommendations from department heads that didn't get recommended at this point. So, um, but we'll provide that information to you and try a little more concise manner.
So is that four point, the list that comprises that 4.7 million, is that more, council?
Yes.
Things that are not recommended at this time? Staff?
That is the staff.
Okay.
The director's, the director's requests that they felt like was keeping up with the changing demand and the environment.
Sure. And, um, we'll get that list, if I heard you, next week, if not sooner, by next Thursday.
Correct.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Hare, did you?
Yes, sir. And I think somebody sort of gave me a side answer. Just wanted to, I saw a couple of you all up there writing down parking lot items, and I just wanted to make sure, were we doing parking lot now, or is that going to be at a later meeting?
We're gonna summarize it up. We're not, we're not discussing the parking lot. There are a lot of things that they don't have the answers to, or we've got, we've asked, expressed interest in. I'm just trying to capture it while we're talking about it, so it can come back.
Now, you gonna capture the ones that I have?
I mean, we can write them on board, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I have the ones that you mentioned the other day in our small group, the listing that you asked for.
When, were they gonna?
We will populate, continue to populate the parking lot slide, is my, and we have it, it's later in the presentation, and we can talk a little bit about how that's supposed to work out.
So, and Council, I'm, I'm thinking, I mean, it's just sounding like we're gonna, we're gonna need an extra meeting or two. Uh, because there's a lot of unanswered questions, um, that I know they're doing good with it, and this is normal. But, uh, I don't foresee us having a public safety discussion, which will be long and proact, uh, protracted. The questions that come out of there, plus the questions that come out of here, been able to clean all that up on the final meeting. I mean. Yeah, that's what I mean. Public safety, yeah. And so, um, but this is, this is how it's supposed to work. But, you know, there, there are a lot of unknowns, um, you know, and, and staff. And, and maybe what we've done in the past is we've captured a lot of these questions. We've had Jennifer, someone send them out and get those answers before the next meeting. Or for, to have a special meeting for question answering. Um, but, but there's, there's a number of questions here. Yeah, yes, sir.
Mayor, uh, you were present when I made the announcement that during our strategic goal, public safety is our number one priority. Yes, it's fine and dandy that we get these answers, these questions answered, but I don't think anything should be higher priority than public safety. So I think it's imperative that we make sure we get the public safety piece nipped in the butt and out of the way before we move on to anything else. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, and to level set, um, uh, Jeff, I don't necessarily know that we, if there are questions we have on the solid waste, we can do that. There appears to be an interest to us to go ahead and start populating the parking lot. Um, but Mayor, to your, to your question as well, um, this is the exact process we've used every year. Um, we, um, budget staff is behind us, are capturing the questions. And I, at the end of this meeting, we were going to probably allow Jennifer or, or Kimberly to actually say, this is what we've heard from you, making sure, and we usually, if we don't do that, we send out the questions to you to make sure that's the question that we're asking. And we have multiple rounds of budget chronicles. And at the beginning of the next session, we answer all of those questions that you had at the beginning of the session to make sure that you have answers to those questions. I think we have three budget work sessions. This is the first of the, of the three.
You have, um, yes, there's three additional work sessions.
Right.
Scheduled. Two of them are not programmed with topics at this point. The next one is programmed on public safety.
It's programmed for public safety. So we have plenty of time. Um, we, um, if council chooses. Um, and some of you may have questions now, we've, we're taking those. But as you go back and you reflect on the document, if you would like to, again, always send us questions, we'll add those in numeric order. Uh, question one, question two, question three, and we, it's a running list. For new council members as well, uh, we have, um, all of the budget chronicle questions from years past as well on our website. I think we still do, Kimberly, don't we? Uh, that, so if, if someone wants to find out how we calculated, let's say, the, um, solid waste tax or some, some fee before, that we kept those as well.
All right. Councilmember Hare, you had, and then Benevente.
Well, I think he, I think he was answered, uh, of the question I was talking about the parking lot. Because if, if you're putting them down, then he, then, uh, Manager Yates said that he had already documented them.
Okay.
But you would put them up there, so.
Got you.
We plan to, we do plan to get those.
That's what I'm asking.
Correct. We'll, we'll compile the list.
Yeah, and I'm wanting to send an email.
Then we will bring that list back to council, and we'll continue to populate the costs related to some of these items, um, to be able to address.
All right. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I, public safety is a top priority for each and every one of us. I agree. Um, in that sentiment, I would want us to recognize how parks and rec and programming for our youth contributes to public safety. How housing and waste management and, you know, those clean streets contribute to public safety. I mean, I think it's kind of, um, overly reductive just to say that, uh, public safety is, is so narrow. Um, you know, arguably, everything that we do can kind of contribute to that conversation. So, um, I just want us to, to keep an open mind, um, when it comes to what we're really discussing here on this budget. I think we can be, um, really stringent, and, and Mr. Yates, I don't know if this is a email that you've already put into the parking lot when it comes to, um, the distribution of tax increase across, um, the city of Fayetteville. You know, I, last I checked, the county said that there was a 60% uh, average increase in residential, uh, property values. But we know that, that, I'm assuming it's a bell curve, that there's people on the upper end and on the lower end of that. Um, and as we're trying to reach something close to a revenue neutral, or at least, you know, feeling the pressure to do so, um, that we kind of recognize maybe how impossible it kind of is to please everybody, um, with a tat, with a particular tax rate number. Um, because, you know, if we go down 60%, uh, because that's the average from, you know, what our previous tax rate was at 57.95, there's still going to be people on the upper echelon whose property values went up 100% or more that are not going to see, um, a net neutral. And then there's people on the bottom end, um, who are going to get maybe sort of a lot back. Um, and then the real troubling part, and this is a part of the budget discussion I want us to all have, and that's why I'm bringing it up now, is that seemingly it's the people who have the least valuable, uh, properties that went up that hundred some odd plus percent. And it's the people who are, um, most well-off that's seeing the least, uh, and would probably see a refund, in fact, no matter how, uh, low we bring the, of the ti- tax rate down. So I think, you know, I want to have a really candid conversation about, um, maybe our council's philosophy on what the reduction's gonna be and whether revenue neutral is actually gonna have the impact that, um, maybe the, the popular claim is that it'll have. Uh, so is that a parking lot item that you've already, already tracking?
I have that request, I have your email request, Councilman. And we, um, as we're constructing the parking lot and answering questions, we'll put that together.
Great. And that's something you think is, well, correct, to figure out, to, to be able to say what the distribution is like?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
It's, it's, you, you believe it's possible for us to get that kind of data to represent it in a distribution like that?
Um, I, I will need to reread the question to see, um, the nuance of it. I've been thinking about how we would do that. I don't have a clear answer for you right now, so I'll have to relook and rethink through how we would do that. But we'll try to approximate something.
Thank you.
All right. Um, thank you. And then, Council too, I wanted, uh, when you come back with that spending, I think Byron had, had given this percentages of, of increase over the last previous couple of budget years. Separate out what, uh, the source of funding was ARPA dollars. You know, ARPA, we accelerated projects, you know, probably two, three budget years ago. Some of that was infrastructure, or we were able to, to put some qualifying, uh, income replacement stuff that we, we kept money in the general fund, but I don't want to conflate the ARPA dollar acceleration bump up from the bond. So, when you bring that list back, make sure it's, it's detailed if you can. And I'll follow this up with a, with an email. All right. Mr. Yates, uh, last couple of items, I think we had a couple of hard breaks at 12:15 from a couple of councilmembers here, and myself, and Brote.
Okay, just real quick, um, under the stormwater, and there's a stormwater, the rate model is in your package. Um, the rate is not recommended to change, although in 2028, we are, um, projecting a possible rate increase. The big change this year in revenue, if you remember back to the rate modeled, or the rate, um, structured discussion, as they revise the square footage allocations, there's about a million dollar increase in the revenue from getting the square footage allocations correct. Um, it, this fund will run a little bit of a balance. And while we work out programs, a watershed, as Sheila and the team have showed you, there's massive projects that need to be done, and more, more projects than resources. So I would expect that, uh, fund balance to come down as we address that. The next is the solid waste. Um, no rate change this year. Uh, but looking in possible 2027, 28 timeframe of a possible rate increase. And that's, this is a largely operational fund, driven by its need for equipment, personnel cost, and the inflation in maintaining those. So you see, and we have fixed number of houses we provide service to largely. So there's not a lot of growth in revenue. The reason, the only way to capture growth in revenue is to either change your service package or change your rates. So, um, all else being equal, going forward, the recommendation around, um, and the 24 column is incorrect for the intergovernmental revenues. Um, I'm sorry, no, it is correct. But the recommendation is to keep it the same. So with that, the parking lot we already have started is our parking lot that we looked at on Monday night. We have the parking study to determine the future of downtown. We're working on a performer for that. Uh, we had at least one council member, two council members ask for revenue over expenditures and what that program cost us. I can tell you on an operational basis, we are transferring money in every year to cover the cost of operations. Um, additional public safety cameras, we're still working through that, and that'll be the topic next Thursday. Brief cam AI software will be the topic next Thursday as well, and festival park security enhancements. Um, and Parks and Recreation had in their ser- current services above recommended. Um, one of their, the recommended reductions was the right-of-way maintenance temp staffing. And that is above the required level of, uh, maintenance along the roadways and litter pickup crews. So this would just dial us back a little bit in that space to what's required. So with that, um, Councilmember Hare, you had a, you started to say something, I'm sorry.
No, I was agreeing with you on the, the technology, the FPD camera technology.
So with that in mind, the, the process going forward, um, next week, the focus will be on the public safety discussion. Um, Brooke's gonna come and talk about OCS. Uh, we'll talk, the fire chief and police chief will both talk about their programs and requested, um, their requested items. Then the safety initiatives discussion around those items from the week ago, Monday night. Jerry Clip will be here to talk about, um, salary, public safety salary study, and perceived compression in that area. Um, and really dedicate, um, our goal today was to cover a lot, so I appreciate your patience with. And really dedicate, our goal today was to cover a lot, so I appreciate your patience with us. But really to get, to have that focused discussion there. And then you have additional work sessions scheduled for the 29th and the 2nd. The 29th being dedicated to budget, the 2nd being a regular work session, which we can certainly take time for budget at that point, to try to iron out the consensus amongst you as a council. So that is all I have for you today.
All right. Councilmember Thompson?
Just one alibi, Mr. Mayor. I think it's imperative that all those who have additional questions or parking lot items that you guys send it as a group email, so we can all participate in some of the concerns that you may have, that we're, we're all on the same sheet of music when we come back on the 22nd, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Abs, absolutely. All right, Councilmember Mosstridjer? All right, thank you. Mr. Yates, thank you.